Welcome today to our commission meeting, the May 3rd. This morning, we have the privilege of having Pastor Charlie Stafford, the senior pastor, Coastal Church, come up today and deliver our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Davis. Pastor Stafford, if you would like to come to the podium here. If y'all please stand.
Father, thank you for who you are in our life. And Lord, thank you that in your divine providence and plan, that you've strategically blessed us by letting us live in the greatest country in the world. And Father, thank you that you've allowed us by your goodness to be citizens of Baldwin County. Father, thank you that we live where people vacation, and we give you praise for that. Lord, we come to you today for our commissioners, God, and thank you for them. And Lord, pray that you would continue to empower them from on high. Father, pray that you would not only give them wisdom, but God, that you would give them a double portion of your wisdom. Father, may everything that they do bring honor and glory to you. Father, you've taught us in your word what you expect of us to walk humbly, to do good, and to love mercy. Father, thank you for seeing those attributes in these men and women as they lead us. Father, we know that they're a blessing from you, and it's you and you alone who ordain our leaders. And Father, we thank you for them, Lord. We give you great praise and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before us today, we have our adoption of the April 19th, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the minutes from April 19th, 2022, regular meeting.
And I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, a second by Commissioner Davis, to approve the April 19, 2022, regular meeting minutes. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Commissioners, before us, we have our consent agenda. When we pass this, adopt this consent agenda, remember that item BQ4 is going to be pulled for the record. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt our consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Underwood to adopt this consent agenda with item BQ4 being pulled, as we discussed yesterday in the work session, a second by Commissioner Gruber. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, we're up to our presentations now. Our first presentation is going to be a proclamation, item CA1. Commissioner Davis, if you would go down to the podium, welcome Kelly Childress and Sylvia Lambeth to the podium.
Do we come up so far?
Whoever wants to come up, just everybody, just come on up. All right. This is proclaiming the month of May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Baldwin County, Alabama, whereas Baldwin County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas the Baldwin County Commission recognizes the need to create a community that provides the services to support older Americans' need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas Baldwin County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities, and responsive to individual needs and preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. Whereas the Baldwin County Commission and the Baldwin County Council on Aging are proud to serve this generation of treasured citizens and will continue to recognize their contributions during this month and throughout the year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that with deepest respect and admiration, we hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans' Month in Baldwin County, Alabama, and we urge everyone to take the time this May to honor our older adults, as well as professional family members and citizens who care for them.
Thank you.
Kelly, would you like to say something?
I would. This morning, well, first of all, wow, what a year, what a few years. And this morning, I have Ms. Sylvia Lambeth and Ms. Ruth Ann Bulnick from the Somerdale Nutrition Center with me. And the past couple of years, the senior centers and the nutrition centers have kind of taken a real beating with the pandemic. And Sylvia is the new manager over the Somerdale Senior Center. It is up and running, and I couldn't think of a better person to come accept this proclamation, not only on behalf of the Somerdale Senior Center, but on behalf of all the seniors in Baldwin County. What a footprint they leave, and thank you. It always makes me nervous to come up here because it's such an honor to represent. I could never say enough about the seniors in Baldwin County. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you for this proclamation. I will give this to Ms. Sylvia and Ms. Ruth Ann. And Ms. Sylvia, if you would like to say any words, you're welcome to.
I have just a few things to say. This is Ruth Ann Bulnick, and she has been volunteering in the community with the senior center for over 15 years. I've learned a lot from her, and I appreciate her service with us. And she's just been, taught me a lot since I've been there in the last couple of months. And also today, I would like to, I'm honored to accept this proclamation in observance of Older Americans Month. And as a member of the older Americans community myself, I'm proud to live and work in Baldwin County, where we're supported by everyone on staff, with the mayor's office, the council, and the Council on Aging, the Baldwin County Commission. And we are just blessed for the part that you all play in letting me age my way. Thank you.
You want to say anything, Ms. Ruth Ann?
I don't want to say anything. All I can say is that I just really have enjoyed working with all the people in the Somerdale Meal Site, and it was a joy. We have lost a few of them now, and I hope we gain some more people back again because we all just love each other and volunteer. Thanks.
Commissioners, would you like to join us down here for a picture?
Y'all come back, come up here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adopt this proclamation for Older Americans Month.
And I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second to adopt item CA1, which is the proclamation, Older Americans' Month, May 22. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Can we say something?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you, and thank you for recognizing one of the sales centers. I know we've got more than one in the county. That one has been in operation for a long time, and when you say we've lost some people there, it's near and dear to me because I've got some folks that were coming there just before the pandemic, and then when that happened, their health has declined, and they're no longer able to be there. They're still with us, but it's just, it's so important to have these centers because it gives the seniors that opportunity to not feel like that they're, I don't know, what they were telling me, what the ones that have gone to the different sales centers have told me is like, look, I feel comfortable around my peers, you know. If I have to, we used to call my mom, when she was on The Walker, we called it clackity-clack. It was like, you know, if there's more than one clackity-clack, it's not a problem, you know. It's not like being in a restaurant where everybody's like, you know, where do you put the baby stroller, where do you put the clackity-clack, or whatever. But she wasn't on a roll later, she had the stationary one. But it just warms my heart to see these centers coming back onboard after being shut in for so long. And so, thank you, and thank you, Kelly. We always can't thank you enough for what you do for our seniors, and they're my passion, and I love them.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank y'all for, you know, what y'all do with seniors. You know, there's a lot of them can't get out to do what they need to do, and y'all help them. And plus, not only that, these centers do give the older Americans a place to go, to have some camaraderie with their friends and stuff, and it gives them something to do instead of just staying at the house all the time. So, thank you all very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the group because now that I'm 74, I feel like I've joined the team. And being able to get together, being able to talk about things that are currently going on in our lives, and more importantly, talking about things that have happened in the past because we learn so much going forward by looking back and seeing what was done by others. And this kind of program gives people an opportunity to continue to think. And we can all think, even if our bodies don't function like they used to, being able to think and share with our colleagues our heartfelt feelings, I think is very important. So this is, this is an extremely important program, and one that our young people may not know much about, but I hope they will have an opportunity to come and visit with some of their, whether it's their grandmother, or somebody else's grandmother or grandfather. But it's very important for us to stay connected and to communicate. So thank you very much.
Yep. Ditto everything that my commissioners say, but I will add this. Our Council on Aging building is bar none when it comes to helping the citizens. I would encourage citizens that aren't old to get in touch with Kelly or whoever's at the Council on Aging building because having dealt with two elderly parents myself, it's a wealth of knowledge to learn the stuff that's out there to take care of your parents as well. You don't plan that a lot of times, and the younger generation, if you have parents that are aging, it's always good to have the knowledge and the avenues that you can take in order to be able to take care of them in a good way. Council on Aging building is a great place to start with knowledge and information that does not cost you a dime to get. So, thank you, Kelly, for what you and your staff do. That's an amazing job, and thank y'all for accepting this proclamation today.
I want to say one more thing, real quick, please. This Friday is a ribbon cutting for the Loxley Sales Center that is in the county, and it's sponsored by the Baldwin County Commission. And I am so excited because this has been a long project because of how that pandemic, I brought that up three times already, I think, but it has really hampered that. So if anybody doesn't know that there is a new sales center that's already open, but we're going to do the ribbon cutting on Friday, and my understanding is the seniors there are so excited because they've got a new place, a new facility, that they can do activities and share a lunch together. So this Friday is going to be the ribbon cutting, but it's already there. So if you're in the area and you're a senior, I think, is it 60 or older, you can get a nutritious, delicious lunch for a very reasonable price, I believe. So, but it's on, is it Longview?
Longview Drive.
Longview Drive, just south of, south of County Road 49, south of Loxley, but it's out in the rural part of the county. It's a nice new building that the county commission has funded and paid for, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank y'all again. We're moving on to our next proclamation, which is item CA2. This is Historic Preservation Month. Commissioner Underwood, if you would, step down there. We've got Ms. Felicia Anderson with our Archas and History Department, as well, Mike Bun with the Baldwin County Historic Development Committee. This proclamation is proclaiming the month of May 22 as Historic Preservation Month in Baldwin County, Alabama, whereas May is dedicated to National Preservation Month, also known as Historic Preservation Month, which celebrates the nation's heritage throughout historic places. And whereas organizations across the country promote a variety of activities on the local, state, and national levels, and whereas the local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Historic preservation is relevant for all communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us, people, and whereas historic preservation is supported by the Baldwin County Department of Archas and History, Baldwin County Historic Development Commission, and the State Historic Preservation Office. And whereas the Baldwin County community, as it grows and develops, continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation through the ongoing historic surveys, the nomination of significant cultural resources to the Alabama and National Register of Historic Places, the protection of its traditional neighborhoods, and the integration of historic elements with the redevelopment and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties. And now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that the Baldwin County Commission hereby proclaims in the month of May 22 Historic Preservation Month in Baldwin County, Alabama, and encourages the public to get excited about the history of their community, the places, the stories, and the people behind them. And the public is also encouraged to visit local historic sites, homes, museums, and find out about the rich heritage of Baldwin County. Would y'all like to say something?
Yeah, thank you very much. I heard you say that part of the proclamation was to get excited about local history. I know all the commission knows I'm excited about local history.
Absolutely.
And it's just really great to live in a county that has this much heritage and has leadership that understands it, and understands its significance to both our past, our present, and our future, and I appreciate that. And we're going to get an opportunity, Felicia asked what Blakely could do as part of it, and so this Friday, what Blakely's going to do is to offer a free guided tour of our park, of our battlefield, of our town site, so people can experience and learn a little bit about Alabama's largest Civil War battlefield, and the site of one of the largest towns in Alabama, Statehood, in Baldwin County's first county seat. So that's what we're going to do as a small part of this, and we just appreciate your support of what we and others, other groups interested in local history are doing.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I get to say my elevator speech this morning, I can't believe it. You know, I believe that God is the creator of places, but we are stewards. And as stewards in this rapidly growing county, it behooves us to do all that we can to preserve our county's history. Because once our history is gone, we can't get it back. Historic preservation is very important because understanding our past is important. The word history also contains the word story. And Baldwin County has a fascinating story, and historic preservation helps us to tell those stories. I know there are times in our past where there are things that may be uncomfortable and sometimes difficult to remember. And oftentimes, when those things come up, we forget or we just ignore those. But we can't forget our past. Anyone that forgets his past can function no better than an individual with amnesia. So I'm very excited that May has set aside to celebrate Historic Preservation Month, and we invite the public to join us in our commitment to preserve our history, and just like Mike said, to get excited about it. In the proclamation, it says that we're inviting you to visit your historic places and your museums and archives in your communities. We also ask you if you have any items of historical significance, to properly care for those so that they can be of use for future generations. And last, Commissioners, I want to challenge each of you, the public, to recognize your own place within your own communities, and then learn and understand not just where you fit, but also that each of you have a place that you belong. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you. Come down and get a picture, yes?
Yeah, just thank y'all for so far, much for being here this morning. You know, the National Preservation Month is very important. You know, we have so much in this county that, golly, it's, people don't realize what's here, and it's so much. And if a person has an opportunity just to go out and look at the history that this county has to offer, it's remarkable. I mean, it goes all the way back to Civil War and beyond, you know, and the things that's here. So if you get a chance, go look at it and enjoy it. Thank you.
I think I'm more excited than I ever was about history when I found out that we had this great archives department here, and then after meeting people like Mike and learning some of the, just some of the things that's up in your head, it's crazy to know how much is right around us that, growing up here, I didn't know all these things, and to know that so much of it has been preserved. And just this past couple of weeks ago, I think it was maybe last weekend, week and a half ago, or whatever, Silver Hill held their Heritage Days, and there is so much history in that little town, and I was so amazed to see all that they did. And so, just seeing the different communities come out, and like you said, to do things in your own community. I'm putting a plug in for Silver Hill, not anywhere I grew up. I grew up Somerdale. But it's so cool to see all these different little communities that do have, they've started small little museums, and people are bringing their family bibles in and different things like that because it's like, you know, their elderly people are passing away, and they don't know what to do with these things. And so, it's really cool to see these things protected and preserved because there's so much history in that. Sometimes that's the only time you know where to go is from some of those family bibles and different things like that. So I think it is just so neat to see how some of these places used to have the different things that were there. I've been seeing this thing about a May Day Queen in Daphne. That has been blowing my mind. I'm like, I remember doing a May Day poll at Somerdale School when I was a little kid. Do people still do that? I don't know, but I thought it was fun. I remember a grease pig contest, too, but I don't know where that came from in my head. But the May Day poll is really cool, and there was a couple of different people who have posted that their mothers or their grandmothers were a May Day Queen over in Daphne back in the early part of the 1900s and mid-whatever, and they have this like really nice trophy and all this kind of stuff. And so, that's just little tidbits that I've noticed, and I hope that just what you guys do and continually do will inspire people to look no further than here before they start venturing other places and to learn our history. I mean, to have one of the Masonry forts right here in our own county, to have Blakely. And I have to admit, I went over there, and I told you, Mike, when we went, that I had not been there since you guys had done all the work that you've done. And I think I've been there since I was in the fifth or sixth grade, and I was just amazed at the work that you guys have been able to do to bring all that back. And it's so much more visual now with your battlefield and all that, and it's just, I just can't say enough. I feel like that little guy on that video about, "I hate Tennessee," you know, I just can't say it enough, you know? But if you're Alabama fan, you know what I'm talking about. But anyways, not even October. All right, I'll quit rambling. Your turn.
I think it's very important for us to not only preserve the written history, but I would hope Mike and Felicia that will, if maybe are doing it, and I'm just not aware of it, but audios and interviews, because every time you say history to me about Baldwin County... County, I think of Blackman standing right up here talking to us for 20 minutes, and I learn something every time he talked to us. So we've got to remember not only our history, but people that delivered the history to us. So thank you for what you do, and let's keep up the good work, because we haven't finished making history. It just hadn't happened yet. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all again today for accepting this proclamation. I think visiting Blakely was definitely an eye-opener to realize that we have one of the largest battlefields here, right here in our hometown, so it was, it was a kind of a chilly, a chilling effect to be in the middle of that battlefield, knowing what took place there and how hard people fought. Felicia does a phenomenal jobs with your, with your department. To answer your question, Commissioner Davis, they have been archiving a lot of videos where they're doing the sit-down interviews, like with Mr. Wilkins and Arthur Hulk and that kind of stuff, and we're getting some of the older people that, we're catching their interviews, and unfortunately, they're passing away, but we've got that last little piece of documentation recorded, and it's, it's amazing to listen to some of the stories that took place here. Also, I would like to just direct the public, any of these places that we're talking about, you might want to know where they're at. We have a lot of historic locations located in Bowlin County. You would just have to download our Historic Tours app, and when you download that Historic Tours app, it'll take you to all the different locations and that you can go and visit in this county. Very easy tool to have, so just download that Historic Tours app and start going and seeing the rich history that we have here in our county. It's something to be, be very proud of. Commissioners, do I have a motion on this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion and we adopt this proclamation.
I'll second.
And a motion by Commissioner Gruber, second by Commissioner Davis to adopt proclamation making May 2022 Historic Preservation Month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, Commissioners, we have Mental Health Awareness Month. Members of the National Alliance on Mental Health and Illness will come forward. And this proclamation is proclaiming the month of May 22 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Bowlin County, Alabama, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with the effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead a full, productive life. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and whereas the Bowlin County Commission commends the National Alliance on Mental Health, or excuse me, Mental Illness, Bowlin County, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need to appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Bowlin County Commission in regular session assembled, that the month of May 2022 is hereby set aside as Mental Health Awareness Month in Bowlin County, Alabama, and the Bowlin County Commission joins the National Alliance on Mental Health, Illness, and their collective efforts to participate in mental health awareness throughout Bowlin County.
Thanks.
Did you like to say something?
Yes. Good morning. I am Patrice Teigs, and I'm a volunteer with NAMI Bowlin, and I'm also one of those visitors that came to Bowlin County and decided to make Bowlin County my home. I love it here. So, mental illness affects one out of five people. The other four people are usually friends and families, and they just don't know how to help. So NAMI Bowlin is here to educate not only the person suffering from mental illness, but to help those friends and families also to be of service. I also want to mention that mental illness does not discriminate. You can be young, you can be old, you can be black, you can be white, you can be rich, and you can be poor, and it will or can affect all of us. So I am so grateful that you all have offered this proclamation and to have May be recognized as Mental Health Month. We did have our kickoff on April 30th to celebrate and to educate and to stop the stigma of mental illness. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get a picture.
Yes.
Let's get a picture.
Yes, you know, mental health can strike anyone at any time. You know, it's not, it's just, it's, it's a shame that it happens, but stress, anything can cause, cause you to go into have mental conditions, and it can be treated in some cases, but you know, I think right now with, we, it's a big issue throughout this country. You know, years ago, you know, we used to have places that we could deal with a lot of these, the mental issues. Right now, we have nothing. If somebody gets, has these mental issues, they call the police, they ended up in jail, and jail is not where these people need to be. They need to be in a caring home so they can get some treatment and get them back to be in productive citizens, and they can be productive citizens. It's just a matter of, you know, getting this country to back and remember, you know, we have to take care of all of our people, so it's very important that we look at doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a very delicate subject, because so many people live in denial, and they don't know, and like you said, that statistic is huge, one in five people, and we're all probably got somebody that we know very near and dear to us or whatever, and Commissioner Gruber's right, you don't want to wait till the person who's mentally ill ends up committing a crime and they end up going to jail, because that's not what they really need. They need help, and being able to recognize that and to remove that stigma is what is so great about organizations like yours. A few years ago, gosh, I guess it's been three years ago now, I was in Leadership Baldwin, and their group worked on the NAMI, and we did a proclamation, and I think we've done one ever since. Maybe the pandemic got in the way. There we go again, pandemic again. Well, that thing just messed things up, didn't it? But you know what? We ain't moving backward, we moving forward, and I am so thankful that you guys use your time and volunteer to get the word out and get the message out, because there's so many things that spur off of mental illness, and sometimes, you know, you'll be thinking about, why can't I communicate properly with this person, and people are like, well, they've got a mental illness, and you're like, oh, how do you recognize that? You know, how do you know with what's going on and different things like that? But I thank you guys. Thank you for coming today, and thank you for what even, you know, every person that wants, just helping one person. I heard somebody the other day talk about your, how many people you affect and how many people you reach in your lifetime for different things, and, and just, if your ripple effect is only for 10, 15, 20, or 50 people over your lifetime, what an amazing thing you can do to help if everybody helped. So, thank you.
I think it's significant for us to realize and recognize that there was a time when you put everyone that had problems in an insane asylum, and it was out of sight, out of mind. The part that it took time to recognize was all the people that were affected by that person, their loved ones. I can recall having an uncle that had some serious problems, and we kind of knew the cause of them, but we didn't know exactly what to do. He served in World War and was a POW, and so there were all kinds of things that impacted his life and value system, and it took some years for us to recognize that Uncle Pete, that wasn't the uncle that we knew growing up. This was the uncle that ended up, and so we worked real hard to make his last years as positive and as productive as could be. And I think it's very significant that we look around and help those that are in need. Many of the people that need help either don't want to acknowledge it or they try to hide it, but if we can be a helping hand to anyone, and sometimes it's just a matter of having someone to talk to. It's not about nosy and getting into their business, but if you ask somebody, we need to talk what's on your mind, and if they'll take the time to tell you, that may help them whether you do anything or not. So, thank you all for what you do. Thank you for helping us make sure that people are aware, because this has been a problem forever, and we just are getting better at recognizing it and working with it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for what you do. The cause is real here. Just in my lifetime of working in the court system, I've seen the diagnostic screening manual for mental disorders go from one addition to the next, and as they create the fifth additions, what they have now, we know that there's more disorders that has been recognized. We have pursued options through our state legislative branch. A bill sponsored by Representative Matt Simpson created a mental health court here in our county, which was much needed. This court provides the needed assistance to those suffering from mental illnesses and are recognized to be in a different type of, I guess you would call defendant in the court system, and recognizes their need, and what we're discovering is, is most of the patients that are being held in the court system there are just in need of medication regulation and in constant contact and making sure that those medicines are up to date, because when the medicines are being followed as directed, like the proclamation says, a mental health patient can live a normal, happy, productive life, just like anybody. On reflecting what Commissioner Gruber says, we have a severe problem, though, with the lack of placing mentally ill patients. We don't have any hospitals, facilities located in the state anymore. I think it's imperative that the state recognize this at some point and pivot and turn back to putting some time, efforts, and funds into finding a place or helping out hospitals with the funding needed to establish some type of mental health facility, other than these outpatient facilities. Sometimes they need more. Another thing that I would like to see in the state of Alabama is a Baker Act, and we have constantly been talking about this, and this would, they have it right next door in Pensacola, in Florida, where you can take your family, friends, loved ones who are not in their right frame of mind, potentially threaten to harm themselves, and at least for 72 hours, you can try to make some plans and get your ducks in a row, and they're safe for that amount of time, and you can figure it out then, but we don't even have that now. So there's a lot of things that we need to improve on, and we, as a commission, can advocate for that through our state legislation body, and hopefully one day have a full-fledged something that's dealing with mental health a little bit better than what we're doing now. But I think we're on the right track with the court and acknowledging, especially with this proclamation, what an honor to be a part of something like that. So thank you again. Commissioners, do y'all have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. We accept this proclamation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Underwood, a second by Commissioner Davis to accept proclamation, CA 3, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 22, and no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Next, Commissioners, we have our public hearing for today, and this is going to be dealing with case number LV 22006. This is alcohol license application for bottles up Mobile Incorporated doing business as the Crawfish Derby 2022. So, open this public hearing. Is there anybody here today signed up to wish to speak for this or against this Ron that you know of? Okay. Hearing nobody, and is there anybody in the building today that's wished to speak for this? You can come forward to this podium here. You're just here in support of?
Just here to support it.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve case number LV 200, 2006, alcohol license application for bottles up Mobile Incorporated in DBA as a crawfish derby 2022.
And I'll second that motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gruber, second, we got Commissioner Davis to approve case number LV 22006. This is an alcohol license application for bottles up Mobile Incorporated doing business as Crawfish Derby 22. Any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And I will just note for the record that this is our last public hearing on the alcohol license, so no longer do we have to do these. Commissioners, as noted in your agenda there. Commissioner Gruber, it's time to keep the lights running.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we pay the bills totaling $16,764,728.54. With the exception of those vendors, commissioners' requests be pulled, which are listed in the Bowlin County Accounts Payable Payments. I think we have item number 164 is the only one, and of that amount, $12,194,785.07 is payable to the Bowlin County Board of Education, and $904,424.07 is payable to the Gulf Shores Board of Education for their portion of the county sales and use tax.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the motion.
I'll second it.
So we got a motion by Commissioner Gruber to pay the bills, and a second by Commissioner Underwood to pay the bills, and this will also exclude item 164. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We pay item number 164.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to pay item number 164. Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Davis would abstain from this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Next up is item EA2. This is another application of interim payments approved by the clerk treasurers allowed under policy 8.1. That takes care of itself. We're now in our other staff recommendations. There is no discussion on these at this time on FA1 or FN1, as we took care of those yesterday. Anything to add to your item, Joey? Okay. Commissioner requests? Is there any request for this, Commissioner? All right, Commissioners, we have our addenda items here. HA1 is the Alabama Tourism Department 2022 Grant Acceptance.
Any motion?
Got a motion by Commissioner Underwood.
I'll second that.
Got a second by Commissioner Davis to approve item HA1. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is order, item number HA2. This is ordering, granting license to establish a private cemetery. Good Morning Neighbor Cemetery, Bamanet, Baldwin County, Alabama. Commissioners?
I make a motion. We accept item HA2, order granting the license to establish a private cemetery.
I'll second that.
And we got a motion and a second to approve item HA2. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Next up is item HA3. This is request for alternative fuel quarter designation in Baldwin County.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve item HA3, the request for alternative fuel quarter designations in Baldwin County.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood and a second by Commissioner Davis to approve item number HA3. If no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we're up to our senior staff report. Ron?
Mr. Chairman, EMA Director Zach Hood has some comments.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I really enjoyed today's meeting. I think it had a common theme. And as you know, we have been in our outreach efforts this time of year. Naturally, we do that because of tropical weather season, but also emergency management has other type events and incidents that we plan, prepare, respond to. As chairman, as you got to see a few weeks ago here on I-65. But the common theme that I recognize is, is with everything that's happened the last two years, it seems, in talking with people out in the public, that we have forgotten the value that we bring to what we do. There's been a sense of, you know, almost of, I've got to be a part of something to have value. And it's a great reminder that we all bring value to what we do. And there's a great call for action in our county to participate in the senior center activities, to help seniors, to volunteer on meals, to feed meals, to volunteer with the Emergency Management Agency, to be involved. And that's just a great reminder for everyone that we all have value in what we do, day to day and each day. And what I wanted to highlight, if I may take a few minutes, is something that we have worked on over the last year, if you will. Today, I have Chief Kimerling. Chief Kimerling is the fire chief in Orange Beach. But Chief Kimerling and myself, along with some other fire chiefs in the county, have had conversations about various type rescue needs. In the event of, for instance, a great examples, everyone saw what happened in Miami with the collapse of a condo, or specialized type rescue for tower. We have large towers throughout the county. And there's a lot of these incidents and events that we have that you just don't think about day to day. But someone has to look at that and understand, well, what do we do if? And so, that's exactly what we have done. Obviously, there's not an answer always for tomorrow, but what we can do is be strategic in our training opportunities. We can be strategic in how we map out the future for response in Baldwin County. And I just wanted to give Chief Kimerling an opportunity, if I may, to say a few words about what we have worked on over the last year. Chief?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Mike Kimerling, fire chief for the city of Orange Beach. Thanks for having me here today. I just want to take a few minutes just to explain the relationship that we have with EMA. With Director Hood, or I was just going to say right off the bat, my job is to lose sleep at night. My job is to think about those things that we don't want to think about and plan for them. And so, I do lose a lot of sleep at night, and I do think about a lot of things. And one of the things that came to fruition in Orange Beach was, we have an elevated water tower. And I don't know if any of you are aware of this, but we had a rescue that we had to do inside of an elevated water tower. It's over 120 feet in the air. It required three different lines to get that individual who'd fallen inside the tower while cleaning it out. Shortly after that, we had the unfortunate incident with the TV tower here. Well, the only benefit we had was during the elevated water tower rescue on Orange Beach, we just happened to have a rope rescue class going on, and it was their final day. And those instructors that were there took the students that were there and the rest of our staff and were able to facilitate a rescue. It was very fortunate. If we wouldn't have had that class going that day, it could have taken us hours to get people there to get that person out. So, one of the things I began talking with Director Hood about is, is that was there a way? Because Orange Beach, while we have resources, we are not FDNY, we're not Chicago Fire Department. We have a finite number of resources, but can we partner with other departments, train and core staff, that on any moment's notice during any day in the county, we can put together a team to at least facilitate some sort of rescue until we bridge a gap where we can get Mobile or Pensacola to come over and help? And Director Hood was extremely, extremely helpful in helping us coordinate that effort. And one of the things you proved today was a training class, which actually enhances our ability. In fact, the training class that you've done is called the Arizona Vortex, which allows rescuers to do something like go down an elevator shaft or in a confined space and lower rope rescue system. So, those kind of partnerships for us are horribly important. We paid for some of the training on our own for the initial rescue, but Director Hood has been helping with some of the training costs. We're buying, we're buying equipment. We got equipment this year through a grant. Gulf Shores has actually gone out and got a confined space grant. So, we're putting together resources. Our city enabled us to buy a light rescue truck this year to put the equipment on. So, this partnership is extremely important for us to be able to provide this. And hopefully, as we build the team, it would be something that is a countywide asset for us to deploy anywhere. And I also want to just take a minute to talk about the whole Beach Safe Program, which I think y'all hopefully have heard about. Again, with the help of EMA, we put out, if you use, go to 888-777 and put in AO Beaches, you will get a daily flag report. That's going up on billboards along our beaches. It's a huge, huge thing. And it's through the Everbridge Program. And again, thanks to EMA and through our 911 Center, we have been able to get that accomplished. And those are all partnerships that I could not get done on my own. So, it is horribly important that we have the resources that you have here to help us out. So, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And commissioners, thank you for being supportive of what we bring to the table in terms of not only a commission, but Emergency Management Agency Department here in the county that has to work day to day to identify how to create relationships, maintain relationships, and build a process or a system in a way that we could continue to grow and develop, just not for short term, but for long-term planning purposes. So, without your assistance, we would not obviously be able to do that. Our part is to help with the training side, and that is exactly what we've done. And can't say enough about Chief Kimerling and the assistance he's provided us. And we'll just continue to work together. And we're very grateful for that. The last item I have, if I may, Chairman, is our intern program. And I do want to highlight that today I have Malik Woodard. It's his last day. He had over 300 hours with emergency management. That included the severe weather events that we've had over the last two months of just the, you know, cold fronts sweeping through, where there have been threats, there have been small tornadoes within the county. And so, Malik Woodard was able to see how that goes from start to finish. And fortunately, they were all, turned out to be small events, but you still have to prepare not knowing what that will be. And so, if I may, Chairman, Commissioner Malik, I'm a little bit nervous. He told me he had a few words to share. I said, we should be able to do that granting we get permission. So, if you, if you allow, Malik had a few words he wanted to share. Thank you.
You told him.
Come on up, Malik.
That's right.
Good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
My name is Malik Woodard. I'm originally from Gonnersville, Alabama. I came to Baldwin County last year in June. I've been coming to Baldwin County vacationing since I was six months old. So, I became an intern at Baldwin County EMA back in February. So, I haven't been there too long. But what I've learned throughout my time there is what I'll carry with me for a lifetime. So, one thing that Director Zach here has always told me is, it's always better to be good and on time, rather than be perfect and late. So, that's one thing I'll carry with me throughout my lifetime. Being an intern at Baldwin County, I've learned a lot. Like he mentioned, I was there with the severe weather, I-65 incident with the truck, 18-wheeler. I've learned how it operates. I've learned about logistics, planning, mitigation. I've been through training, countless hours of training. These are things that I can carry with me as I move forward in my career as an emergency manager. Last thing I want to say is, if there's one thing Director Hood has taught me, is always do better, be flexible, and expect the unexpected. Thank y'all for everything.
Thanks, Malik. Thank you, Malik.
Thank you. Malik gets to walk and have his, get a bachelor's in science in emergency management here in a few days. So, congratulations, Malik. And like I said, everyone brings value to what they choose to do day to day. Malik certainly has brought value. All of our interns continue to bring value to what we do. Some of the projects that are, things that have to be updated or renewed, those kind of, those are perfect opportunities for interns to come in and not only learn about that, but help us execute those behind the scenes, the areas that no one ever gets an opportunity to discuss. Those are just as important as the things that have high visibility. So, thank you for allowing us to have internship programs. Malik is the ninth intern over three years. And what is so great about this is they have an opportunity to compete for jobs here, but they also have the opportunity to compete outside of our county as well. Nonetheless, at the end of the day, it's all someone that we have helped place where they are. And the bigger picture is, is that at some point in this field, you will work together in the future, always. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thanks, Zach.
Next up, we have our public comments. Anybody here from the public wish to share comments? Press questions?
Good to see everybody.
Good to see you, Hal. Next up, the long-awaited commissioner comments. So, who's going to go first? How about you, Commissioner Underwood?
I'll be happy to. So, as I was sitting here thinking, what am I going to say? This Sunday is Mother's Day. And I think about that old commercial from the 1970s where Bear Bryant says, have you called your mama today? Yeah, I'm old enough to remember that. And some of us can't call our mama today. And so, if you hadn't called your mama today, don't wait to Mother's Day to do it. Call her every day. If you have a mama you can call, you call her. I have a mama that's still alive, but she is suffering from dementia. I can't call my mama. I have to go in that nursing home and get right in her face and say, mama, this is Billy Joe. And she's like, oh, okay, you know? But if you've got a mama you can call, you call her every day. And for those of you out there who are mothers, Happy Early Mother's Day. It's such a great time to honor, honor those. And I just want to, again, thank, we have such an awesome group of people here in Baldwin County, our staff, our, our, people who engage with us, just seeing the people who came here today and received the proclamations. And thank you, thank you, Chief. That was great to hear that little story. And I hear great things about your fire department anyways. And so, I don't know, I'm not real prepared, but just don't forget, call your mama.
Commissioner Gruber?
First, I want to start out with, y'all are very well aware that, you know, we lost probably one of the greatest legislatures that the state of Alabama has ever had, Mr. Steve McMillan. You know, he passed away last Saturday morning, Friday or Saturday, Friday night, I think it was. And his services will be Saturday from the Gulf Shores United Methodist Church. I think they start at 1:00 or something like that, you know? But the burial will be at Stockton Cemetery at 4:30, from what I understand. But, you know, he was a true statesman. He was one of the people that, he told you he's going to do something, he's going to help you. And he helped not only the people in Baldwin County, but this whole state of Alabama. Some of the bills that that man carried through has made Alabama what it is today. And he's going to be missed very, very much. I just want to send my condolences to the family and to, you know, just, he was a great man. And I looked up to him. He was kind of my mentor. So, please remember him in our prayers. Thank you.
I think it's very timely that we mentioned Mother's Day and also recognizing Steve McMillan. While he technically represented just part of Baldwin County, he was in touch with every one of us, was very knowledgeable about things that were going on. And if he wasn't, he would ask you, get me some information, and I'll see if I can help. Being able to help leads us into relationships. And the way you get things done is to have the kind of relationships that the fire departments and the EMA has, that the cities and the counties have. I think part of what makes us so unique is that we're the fourth largest county in the state population-wise. We're the largest in geography, but we don't have a dominant metropolitan city. So, that requires all of our cities and towns who can't do it by themselves to be in touch with and collaborate with the county. And I'm real proud, I also think, I'm real proud of how we work it, and also think that it's good that we are elected countywide. We have to live in a district to run, but then we have to be responsible for the entire county. So many counties, it becomes provincial. I'm in District this, so I'm only going to work on things that'll benefit my district. Well, our district is Baldwin County. And we reach out and touch the southeast and much of the rest of the state. So, things that go on down here are vital, not only to you and I and our next-door neighbors, but they're vital to those kids in school going forward. And all the topics, when I grew up, we were referred to as road commissioners. And that was kind of what we did in the rural counties and maybe still do. But here, we're very much involved, not about producing answers, but collaboration and coming up with what our options are. And the way you make things happen is that you get around and determine what our options are. Because in every arena, the question is, what's next? What's next in our school system? What's next in the highways? What's next in medicine? What's next in education? I mean, what's next? Think about the things that have changed just in your lifetime. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I can remember when we had a four-digit phone number. So, technology has greatly enhanced, improved, and created an opportunity for us to even do better. We haven't finished, and I'm not sure you ever finish. What you do is make sure you're striving to get better at everything you do. And I'm just tickled to be a part of this group and a part of the team that makes paradise, as I refer to it. As we get bigger, let's get better. Thank you.
That's hard acts to follow right there. Because I've said it all, but I'll add a few more things, pivoting back to Representative McMillan. I don't know if the general public knows, but he was the longest-serving member in the House of Representatives until his death. So, I think he started in 1980 and has been serving ever since on, in both parties, as a Democrat and a Republican. So, very well-respected man. I respect him the most. Of one of his greatest accomplishments was getting William F. Green Veterans Home here in Bamanet, Alabama, which benefits all veterans. And he's instrumental in so many things. His constituent services guy, our Cliff McCollum friend, he posted a quote that I've copied and pasted because it means a lot. And I'm just going to read it. Says, "No one is actually dead until the ripples that they cause in the world die away." Steve McMillan left ripples in this world that will live on for hundreds of years. So, nobody's going to ever forget him, what he did, the contributions he made, not only to the state, but the care that he had for the county. And, you know, on another note, I don't think a lot of people know, he's a pretty good realtor, too. So, he had little offices right across realtor, too, so he had a little office just right across the street here. So, Steve's going to be greatly missed by all, and there's no one, no one's going to fill those shoes, big shoes to fill. So, again, like Commissioner Underwood said, this weekend is Mother's Day, so Happy Mother's Day to all those mothers out there. And she, that's a very good comment that Commissioner Underwood stated, that pick up the phone and call your mother if you can, if you can. May the 5th, just to let everybody know, is coming up as National Day of Prayer. I would really highly recommend that you get up with your local chambers, cities, whatever you can, and find an event that will be all over the county that day. There will be some type of breakfast, prayer breakfast to go and attend. I encourage all the citizens to go do that. It's a great day to celebrate, and it's a very sobering experience just to take a little time and to recognize the National Day of Prayer. Zach brought this up, and it was, and it's comical, but, and I think that everything turned out all right, but I had gotten word about the I-65 event that happened last week where 18-wheeler truck left the roadway and split the I-65 bridge basically in two and went perfectly in the middle of the river. Luckily, the gentleman that was driving the truck was able to get out of the truck before it eventually sank to the bottom of the river. The truck was just a little bit exposed with the top of it out, and I went down to the scene just because I knew Zach was going to be there, and I just wanted to observe what was going on, because I'm definitely a hands-on person. And I must say that that was the, that was one of the greatest learning experiences I ever had. I mean, for me to be crawling around on top of a semi truck that's in the river, may not be everything that a Commissioner's supposed to be doing, but I was just observing. I was very intrigued about what was in the truck, how we could safely get it out, and we were all down there brainstorming on how to do this from start to finish. All those people involved in that process was fun. I think we've talked about this previously, but I just want to bring that back up, that what a great learning experience. And our EMA office and our first responders, as we have Chief Orange Beach here today, thinking outside the box, collaborating on what's going to happen next as far as this response team that we're working on, that's greatly needed in a county this size, this magnitude with this population, especially with the tourists that are down here that adds probably double to the population on any given weekend that we have. So, these types of, the plans are needed for a county like this, and I'm honored to be a part of a system that's always looking to, as Commissioner Davis says, as we get bigger, we're going to get better at everything that we do. This is a prime example of a great partnership. Hopefully, one of these days, Chief, as you said, we'll be partnering with the local surrounding cities, counties, and we will have a big response team because we know that we have a huge waterway system, we have a huge rail system in this part of the county, and we have two large interstates that at any given time, crazy stuff could happen with, and we need to be on top of it. And this is a start forward with recognizing and thinking outside the box. And, you know, I'd love to sit in some of those meetings when y'all start having them as well, because all great minds think alike, and we could come up with all kinds of different things. But with that being said, I'm done with my comments. I've skipped over, just because unintentionally, the county attorney's report. I will let our county attorney tell us. We don't have anything today.
You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
I did not mean to forget you, Brad. I love lawyers. So, yeah, so we didn't have a county's attorney's report, so I didn't, I just left it out. I'm sorry. With that being said, Commissioners, do y'all have anything else you'd like to add? I hate to even ask that, but I guess I might stay here another 30 minutes.
That's an open door.
Yeah. And this, is there a motion? We got a motion by Commissioner Underwood.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, and this is to adjourn this meeting at 9:40.
Very good. Thank y'all.